All right, I call the meeting to order at 7:01. Maya, can you establish the quorum?
Yes, Trustee Brown.
Present.
Trustee Cobos Smith. Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Here.
Vice President Rocha.
Here.
President Hernandez.
Here. We'll start off with item 1B, the flag salute. Trustee Lathan, can you lead us in the flag salute?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to two items for information, discussion, and action by board. We'll start off with item A, presentation, the January 2025 update on the 2024-25 second interim considerations and 2025-26 budget balancing solutions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Discussion.
Yes, hi, good evening. Although I'm standing up here, I was going to try and attempt it to do it from my seat, but sometimes it's hard to see what's on the screen when it's in the back of my head. So this is like a concerted effort of information that has been put together by all of Cabinet as well as Director Carrie Wells and Mia Cancio, so thank you guys. But it's not intended to be a full-blown budget update. It's kind of just providing some information, some insight into what we saw at the governor's budget based on some information for 25-26, which will be included in the second interim, and it's different than what you saw at the first interim. And then just to re-- I'm going to briefly go over the LCFF and sort of dabble in how it's calculated and what the components are, just to get a glimpse of that. And then we'll go into some other budget balancing solutions that we are using to try and balance the budget for next year. So here's the agenda. We'll do the LCFF overview. We'll do a glimpse into the second interim, both for the current budget year and a NYPD for next year. We're going to look at some budget guiding principles that we use. We always have guiding principles when we're doing our budget every year. This is not an exception. It's just that this year, we're looking at lower revenues, no one-time money. And so we have to sort of be mindful of that and look at what our deficit has been and how do we address that over time, so we're not cutting dramatically in one year. So we do have some budget balancing, planning, and strategies that we'll include, and then some next steps. So this is just a little summary of basically how the LC-- what's included in the LCFF. So on the left side, you can see the LCFF is composed of base grants for all students by grade span. And when we-- but what we mean by grade span is we get different amounts based on the grade levels, and you can see the how they're divided up here. When the state goes and gives us a COLA and applies a COLA to the LCFF, it's based on the base grant only. It's not the total amount. So you wouldn't go and look at our total revenue and apply a COLA on that. The COLA is applied to the base grant. And then we also have what we call grade span adjustments that are included in the LCFF for TK and three and nine through 12. And then in addition, and this is for all schools in California, and then in addition, we have a supplemental and concentration, and that's for our unduplicated pupil population who are students that are enrolled in like English learners, free to reduce meal plan program eligibility, or foster youth. So we speak of the COLA, and the COLA is what is one of the factors that either increases or helps our revenue increase every year. And what we're seeing with the LCFF is that even though the state applies a COLA, districts are seeing different amounts come in. So for example, for 22-23, the state applied a 13.26 a COLA to the base grant. For our district, because of the variables that are included in the calculation, which is do we have declining enrollment, what's our ADA percentage and our unduplicated count percentage? Those factors into it. And so our local COLA was 12.36. So when the state gives us a COLA, that doesn't mean districts actually see what the state is giving it. That COLA, again, is based-- is applied to the base grant. So this graph just shows you for 22-23, 23-24. This year, we're getting a negative COLA, so that means we're getting less money than prior year. And then you can see in 25-26, because we have some improved numbers, our unduplicated count percent went up, and it's a three-year rolling average, and so it will help next year. So our COLA appears to be a little bit higher, which is really good. We haven't seen that since the LCFF has been out. And then in 26-27, it goes down slightly again because of the variables. This is a very, very basic explanation of one of the reasons why districts don't get the full COLA. So in 24-25, if we have one student enrolled, and they are-- they come to school every single day. The state had applied the COLA, so they take the 23-24 base grant. They apply a COLA, and this would be the new adjusted base grant for this year at $11,068. So for every student TK to three, we get this amount if they come to school every single day. So if that same student only comes to school 90% of the time, we're only getting 9,961. So that is just sort of a basic-- and people don't understand that concept. And so I just wanted to kind of, one student, 90% of the time, that's how much we're going to get for that student. So this is sort of the bigger scale with a lot of information here on-- this is actually the LCFF summary of our calculation. I'm not going to go through this in detail, but I just want to show all the variables involved. And the most important ones for the LCFF are the COLA that we just talked about. Our unduplicated pupil percentage is very important, and then this column is our ADA. So you can see we have our base grants here, our grade spans that we talked about, supplemental concentration, and then we have a total LCFF. We have some what they call add-ons, and the newer piece of the LCFF over the last two years is this TK add-on. So they have-- now they apply a number to our TK ADA, and so this is how we're getting funding for TK via LCFF. Okay, so that's new in the last couple of years. And so what you'll see in next year, the reason why our COLA, our local COLA is a little bit higher, is because they're doubling that TK allocation. So it's going from 3,000 to 6,000 per TK. So that helps districts get money, and it could take us above the COLA. So this is just an example or a comparison of what happened last year versus this year. And you can see that we-- our COLA was very high last year. Our local COLA was decent as well, but we are still getting less, okay? You can-- it's a comparison of our three-year rolling average. This was our three-year rolling average for 23-24, and it bumped up to 80%. So that's going to help us get more revenue this year. And then again, you'll see what happens for next year. And then the funded ADA, so again, I know I've said this before, but we have our actual ADA, and that is really the number of-- the percentage-- the number of kids that are actually coming to school on those days. But the state has also rolled in since COVID a way for districts to capture more dollars because the ADA has been low because of COVID and the sickness. And so we are still applying what we call the three-year prior average, which is our funded ADA. So you'll hear me talk about ADA, which is our actual ADA, and then our funded ADA, which is applied when we do our calculation for revenue. So this is a comparison of the same thing we just looked at, but it's going for the multi-year now. So this is the current year. We just talked about these numbers here. And so for next year, what's changed from first interim to second interim is the COLA. It was 2.9, now it's 2.4, so that COLA actually went down. But because the TK went up and we-- our unduplicated count percentages went up slightly, our COLA, our local COLA is actually going to be a little bit higher, so that's really good news, okay? So again, when I talk about budgeting and things change and numbers change, not only is our expenditures changing, but also our revenue assumptions change because we don't finalize these numbers until almost the end of the school year. And so when we show you budget documents, they're going to change each time we show you because we have information that does change, and we really don't finalize until an audit of actuals. So you can see that we are getting an increase to our LCFF entitlement. That's our projections now for next year. So why are we talking about budget reductions, right? We're getting more LCFF, but we're talking about budget reductions. So if we go back in history, which I'm not going to do today, and we look at COLA, local COLA, and just the expenditures that we've incurred and we have taken on for ongoing expenditures, such one example is negotiations. So if we look at the percentage of money that we've given away, it's almost exactly what we've gotten. So if we're giving all of the new revenue away for salary and benefits, we still have to account for increases to services, utilities, all those other things, okay? So those are other things that you have to look at within the budget. So that's when I talk about what is the cost to turn the page? So if you-- for every school district in California, there is an automatic increase to their expenditures for things such as step and column. We automatically have to-- we automatically increase our salaries for step and column. Stirs and purrs has been in that category for the last several years. Are we increasing or are we decreasing FTE? And so if we're increasing in enrollment, that means we're going to have more staffing, so that means salaries go up. But if we're decreasing, if we're declining enrollment, we might have a savings. But still, that will be incorporated in the cost to turn the page, whether it's increasing or decreasing. Oftentimes, special education goes up year over year, right, for their services. Districts for routine repair and maintenance, it's a restricted program, but it comes from the LCFF or the unrestricted, and it's calculated based on 3% of your total expenditures. So if your expenditures are going up year over year, your contribution to this one is going to go up because it has to be 3%. And then we apply, for budgeting purposes, what we call CPI to applied services and supplies. So we anticipate that there's going to be some sort of increase. So that's the cost that we're going to incur, no matter what, when we start the new school year. And then we look at, is there any medical or dental costs? So these are just a summary of things that we have to incorporate in the budget to turn the page. So we have to look at what's the LCFF and what's the new revenue? What's the cost to turn the page, ongoing, and then what do we have left? So as we look at budgeting, and we do this every year, and we're doing it more as a concerted effort with staff, to look at-- our target was about 3 million. So as we looked at the multi-year and what the deficit looks like and what the structural deficit is comprised of, we're, like I said earlier, we're trying to address that over time, okay? So our target is about 3 millions of some sort of reductions to ongoing, not just one time, but ongoing expenditures. This is a conversation that will probably take place over the next several years just because of the way that the state revenues are going. And it's, you know, for us, it's about 1%, so it's not huge, but it definitely is a very important conversation to continue to have. And so for this year, we're looking at some of the focus areas like, you know, obviously, we want to minimize the impact to the classroom. We want to leverage restricted dollars if we can leverage retirements and attrition. So that means if we're reducing staffing, if there's people retiring or leaving, then we don't have to fill those positions, and then we don't have to do anything with staffing. We also want to leverage our one-time funds and make them go as far as possible and--
Yeah, question?
Finish.
Question? Okay, and then the last thing we are looking at is aligning staffing and resources based on what's the reality of our programs today, what's the circumstances today?
Thank you. For the 3 million, is that 3 million over three years? Or is it still the 9 million and then 3 million a year?
So, good question. So it's 3 million for next year.
For next year, okay.
So I'm still working-- so let's say first interim. When we did the first interim, my projections were 3 million for next year, 4 million for the following year. That could change now because our revenue is generating more, so that 4 million might decrease. I just have to sort of run everything through. So just, we want to start the conversations. We want to start looking. We-- I feel, my team feels, Cabinet feels, that we, by looking at some of the things that are already budgeted or ongoing, that we can address the $3 million by realigning professional development with new or existing restricted funds. One thing that's not on the slide that I'm still waiting to hear, but as part of the governor's budget, there is some more one-time money. And so if we look at ongoing-- so we've probably been spending money in the unrestricted side on professional development, so we can remove it from the ongoing piece. And then if we feel like we need-- people need professional development, we can use the one-time and utilize the money because that's a good way to spend the money. We will refine, and we will really look at the sections that we're allocating to secondary. We have been very generous with our allocations, meaning that we are giving additional staffing so that they can have lower class sizes. And it's not that we don't want lower-class sizes, but we can tighten it up a little bit. Limit travel and conference to essential programmatic needs. There are some vacant positions that have been long-term vacancies. So we're looking at, do we really need these positions if they have not been filled for the last year and a half? And so we can remove those because they're in the budget as an expenditure year over year. So vacancies, do we need them? We're working through all that. Always, 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 we evaluate contracts and services, but we're doing it a little bit deeper now, and we're going by each line item. What contracts have we been using year over year, and do we really need these contracts? We're always seeking for new revenue because if we can get grants, that helps offset the unrestricted. Christine and her team are evaluating the LCAP along with, you know, us as well. The actions for effectiveness, so they're looking at what's in the LCAP, what are we spending our money on, and is it effective? And then we always prioritize our staff, and then we want to continue with recruitment and retention. So those are the ways that we're doing our balance-- our budget balancing. We're looking at it. We've been talking about it weekly and coming up with other ideas. But those are basically the strategies that we're able to help with the $3 million. So next steps, we're not recommending extensive layoffs, and we are not removing or eliminating any major program. But the next steps will include, so for some of the, either the vacant positions or some of the positions that we have identified that are not needed for next year, there will be a resolution that Dr. Rob can speak to that will need to be approved by the board. And then on March 19th, I will give you more details specifically on the current year and next year during the second interim.
And you-- the recommendation for not recommending extensive layoffs? Extensive is the key word. So does that mean some layoffs or only positions that have not been filled?
Great question. So part of this is, again, in development. And now that we have an interim superintendent, having the opportunity to spend some time with him as well addressing these concerns, we do not believe at this point in time that we will have any certificated layoffs. Remember, your employees are in two major categories. Your certificated employees, that means everybody who has a credential to provide services to the district. And then you have classified employees who do not have a credential, but there's a myriad of classifications that they provide service to. We have employees that are also distinguished by your management and non-management. Management does fall into both certificated and classified assignments. Again, at this time, we do not believe, because we have had an increase in enrollment. So when you have an increase in enrollment, you wouldn't necessarily have a certificated layoff. There could be some of these positions that have been vacant. If they're classified positions, you have to go through a process of resolution, even though nobody is in the position, to formally lay off those positions to remove them from the budget. That's the appropriate structure that you go through. So again, answering the questions, very strategic, very minimal is what we'd hope will occur over the next couple of weeks. Liz mentioned the resolutions. What happens is that the board does have to give authority to the Human Resources Department. to give authority to the human resources department to effectuate a layoff, any reductions in the positions that are part of the budget. Sometimes, again, positions may stay vacant for a while, but they're never truly removed from the budget until you do a resolution calling them back. That tells the community, we are not actively looking for these positions. It tells your classified human resources department, you don't have to actively recruit for these positions, or same thing for the certificated. And it informs the associations of positions that are within their units that you won't have. So again, we're just giving you the first blush that there could be a resolution. As we get more dialed in here, if we have positions that we decide we really do need to remove these from the budget, it would come as a resolution to the board. You haven't seen these in a long time, because we haven't done these, but it comes as basically informing the public, informing the association, that the position will not be as part of the budget next year. Then behind that process, there are education codes that provide all current employees who are permanent employees, notification procedures. And those are governed under education code, that by March 15th, we have to give notification to any directly impacted employees. And so you've, we have to work under that education code, which then we can't effectuate any of those notices or any of that process unless we have an approved resolution. So that's why, again, we don't have a resolution tonight. We don't even have the direct details spelled out yet, because again, the more work we continue to do, the refining of that process to determine if, in fact, we have to come to you with a formal resolution. So again, as soon as we have that clarity, the board will be apprised, and you'll have the opportunity to review and provide feedback and approve it so we can move forward.
I think, is that the end of the presentation?
Yeah.
Any, any other questions? Maybe we'll start where we were at. Trustee Lathan?
No.
Great. Vice President Rocha?
My concern is if you're high school, you're talking about increasing. We have a maximum on our high school sites, right?
You're talking about class size?
Uh huh.
Yeah, we're still going to be with, within all of our class size and our, and our language. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Trustee Kobo Smith?
So I had a question about the ADA. I'm noticing we're only at 90%. That seems kind of low. Is that, have we done any, I mean, I'm sure you guys have thought about this at length, but like increasing that at all? Have we put any investments into, and would that, and would that be helpful?
Yes, absolutely. ADA is, obviously benefits the students to be. Can't learn, they can't learn if they're not here. So that's first and foremost. But any percentage above what we can, we get is, helps us with the revenue. I mean, I think Christine could maybe talk to what the school sites are doing to improve ADA. I know they always have programs. But we have seen an increase. And I know 90, 90 is low. Like prior to the pandemic, we were probably more like the 94, 94 and a half at this district, which that was about the average for this district. So we're getting there. We were under 90. Like most districts were like 88, 89. So it has improved, but there's definitely room for improvement. We need to get back up to the 94, 95, for sure.
I have, I have one more question. What are we going to do if we have a loss of revenue? Not loss of revenue, but attendance. We're seeing quite a bit going on. How is that going to affect us on this budget?
That will affect us. Although, we're, we're using for this year, we're using the three-year prior average, so it probably won't impact us that much this year, but it could impact next year's if our ADA next year isn't high enough to where we take the, the single-year ADA, and we have to go back to the three-year prior average. We have been, we did meet with our principals yesterday, and we're looking at the attendance very closely. If, to see, you know, where, who we have to contact, students, parents, families. And I know that they were having meetings and doing a presentation for, for the families.
Are they being told that they could stay home and do a home study type?
Yes, independent study.
Okay.
Yeah, that has been discussed. We, we actually ran data because there's an assumption that our attendance is really poor. Yes, Monday was the lowest we've seen in a very long time, and understandably so. But when we looked at our data from this year to last year, we're pretty much consistent, and even in some cases, we're still better. Have a seeing better attendance than we did at this time last year. But we are working with families. That's our goal, is trying to identify families that prefer to keep their students home at this time, and working with them through independent study.
Good. Thank you.
Trustee Brown?
Yes, I do have a question. It's on page six, home-to-school transportation. Is that dollar amount, has any idea, like, if it's going to have electronic buses, or is this just for the transportation that we have now for our students?
So that, that particular dollar amount is something, it used to be the amounts that districts used to get before LCFF.
Okay.
We actually get a larger grant amount that's outside the LCFF for home-to-school transportation.
Okay.
That we're working on our program, trying to hire to do it. Because this district had a limited transportation program, and so we're trying to expand it. And it's, it's a, it's a, it's a much better program. And so we are, we are looking at that. As far as electric buses, we have one or two electric buses in our fleet. The issue is, is the batteries don't last long.
Oh.
So we can't, we can't go too far with them. And the, and the charging stations just aren't, just aren't available. So if we wanted to do, like, let's say athletics, for example, and something that we're talking about with other districts as they continue to add that electric, electric bus to their fleet, it's like, can we use your charging station when we're taking our students to your school for their athletic event? Because you can only go so many miles. So you can't do field trips with them.
Okay.
I mean, unless you're local. So it, it's a challenge, but we're working through that.
Okay. And then my second question is small schools district bus replacement program? I noticed there's no dollar amount.
Yeah, we don't, we don't qualify for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was it. Thank you.
Great. I do have a few questions. I guess, can you speak a little bit as to like, what, I guess, like along that multi-year projection, what future years are looking like, and why that's, and how that influences the decisions that we're making now, because we still have future reductions coming, and the, the future funding landscape doesn't look to be significantly better coming?
So, yeah. So like, that's when I speak, like, the 3 million is kind of like, okay, this one probably could be done with budget dust, right? That's kind of the term sometimes that CBOs use. Let's, oh, that's budget dust. And so you kind of look at the high, low-level hanging fruit, so to speak. But as, as the years, if our, our ADA doesn't increase, if the COLAs don't increase, if our unduplicated count stays the same, then we will have to tighten, really tighten it up and look at staffing and layoffs and those kinds of things that other districts are actually experiencing right now.
Yeah. And then, oh, sorry for not, like, asking this in advance and maybe asking for a little bit of behind the envelope, like math calculations. But can you maybe help walk us through some of what these percentages kind of mean, right? So we have like a 1% reduction that we need in our budget, which is at 3 million. And I think, right, that, that's a much more real figure for people. 1% sounds like that's nothing, but $3 million is a lot of money. And in that same way, you know, what is that, does, is that translation pretty similar for like our COLA? Like, is a 1% COLA also equivalent to a $3 million increase to our budget, especially if it's a local COLA?
So if you look at, if you look at 25, 26, so you compare it, right? So we're going from a 1% COLA, state COLA, to 2.43, and our local COLA is 2.54. And our, our dollars are going from 207.5 to 212. So about 5 million.
Okay.
If you look at the, the difference. So 1 and 1/2% ish gets, yields us about 5 million with this calculation. But it's not straight because there's all these other variables that could change. But generally speaking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I'm just trying to see, yeah, what places can I kind of translate for myself, and I guess for other people, like, what these percentages mean in like real dollars? And I know, yeah, there's different pieces here. I guess to that, that same point, when looking at something like our Cal Stirs or Cal Purrs, what is that, do we know what that kind of translates to into like absolute dollars? That one feels a little tougher to do.
Yeah, that one's a little tougher because you have to, it's based on how much, what our salaries are. So, but I can give you a number. So if I tell you one, if we give everybody in the district a 1% raise, and the 1% of raise includes the salaries today plus the employer costs, which includes unemployment, workers' comp, stirs and purrs, that's about $2 million. So if all of our employees get a raise, 1% is $2 million.
Okay. Okay. That's, that's really helpful, because I think it can be so challenging, at least for me, like, looking at this there and see, like, oh, we need a 1% reduction, but we have, you know, 1% increase in COLA. You know, what does a 1% raise look like for our employees? And all those lead to different absolute numbers in our, you know, perfectly.
And they change every year. So yes, I get it.
Right. And then, I'm wondering, what's, what do we know about, I guess, the, the state of the job market outside of us in terms of, like, will, is it still continuing to be challenging to fill vacant positions? Do we think that will continue to be a challenge in the future? Maybe just like, kind of a brief summary of that?
Yes, there's going to continue to be a teacher shortage. The entrance into teacher programs themselves are very low. And so looking at trying to predict how we, as a district, are going to fill our vacancies. We've actually done an incredible job, and I will say to the, the human resources departments, in filling our teacher vacancies in this most difficult time. A huge part of that comes with the great salaries and benefits that we do have for teachers. We've been able to attract a number of well-qualified individuals into the district. However, we do have a more veteran staff, and so as retirements start to come, that teacher crisis will still be there. So it's going to be a challenge. Also, the classified service, having people enter the workforce is still a challenge as well broadly, from across our sectors, across the private sectors. It's a concern of getting the positions filled. We do continue to have some contracted services. So we see that sometimes. But we also need specialists to work with particular children that we can't get to fill jobs that we have. So that's a challenge to create some new jobs. Like last year, we had a physical therapist. That was a brand-new position that we didn't have, and we had a child that needed that type of therapy due to their services. So we actually went through the entire process to create a job, add that to our roles, hire an individual, where we were able to bring an individual into the district, saving dollars that we would have been spending on a private contractor. It's a very small example, but it's those types of detail workings that we'll be doing for years to come, trying to make sure that the services that our students have are provided at the right cost as well. Because, as we know, our employees really govern about 85% of the cost of a district when you get down to it. And so being extremely targeted with the services we have, with the individuals we have, and that's where oftentimes districts do get themselves into more difficult trouble with expenses for employees beyond what you can manage. And so just working in that as you look to the future.
And, and you started to touch, exactly, I think, on, on the question that I'm headed towards and was flying up with that, is, you know, thinking about, like, what's the state of our, our workforce, and what, you know, considerations could we, did we have when it comes to looking at, yeah, the retirement age of our workforce, and whether, you know, some districts sometimes do consider plans that encourage earlier retirement, and, and whether it would, yeah, even be feasible to get, you know, new employees. And I think, as you said, right, when we have a, a job market that's so challenging, that I think that feels like much less of an option.
Yeah. More difficult.
So I'm, I'm wondering, yeah, like, what kind of considerations, I guess, the state of our workforce had in some of the decision-making, or is playing in the decision-making that's going on?
And again, I would just concur that because we have not the wealth of brand-new applicants coming in, we're hesitant to start asking people to think about leaving, because if you want to keep working, we want to keep you working. So for the positions that we have. But it is, it's a, a little bit of a juggling act, looking at who can we get to come in, but who's working for us. And there is definite increases in costs with more veteran staff.
Great. And then, I guess, thinking about this resolution that's going to come to us, will we know of those positions that are listed on there, whether those are positions that are vacant, or whether those are positions that are currently occupied by an employee?
Yes. What I've done in past practice is be able to develop the resolution that identifies the actual positions. Because again, right now, we're looking at the positions, and if they happen to be vacant, we would identify that. If they're not vacant, then we would identify that. You will not see names on the resolution, because that protects the process. The classified human resources department has a very specific process, working through the personnel commission regarding rights of employees, potential bumping rights of employees. And it's very detailed and complicated, but you'll see a position. And again, right now, we're not identifying any certificated layoffs, so that's a very positive thing for the district. But again, similar suited, we would, if we were to do that, you would identify by credential the particular positions that we would not be having going into the future. But right now, we're not looking to do any of those.
Great. And then, I guess, thinking about, now, I guess, back to the other conversation about like our ADA. So right now, we're working off this three-year average. Do we know what, or have any indication of what the long-term plans from the state is as far as smoothing what that transition could look like into either going back to how we traditionally calculated ADA, or any hold harmless practices that may be coming, or just, you know, what does that look like? Are we just going to potentially reach a point where we just immediately switch back and potentially be in a worse or better position, depending on what our criteria is?
So the good news for us is ours is improving. So as we look, we're pretty close to using the current year. So I, I don't, I'm not aware of a sunset for that three-year average. That's one. Two, before the three-year average, it used to be current year or prior year. So if we saw that we had declining enrollment, we can always budget on the prior year. And we were, at the time, we got to use one or the other. And so that gave districts one year to kind of prepare for a lower enrollment for the, for the next following year. And so that, that's their hold harmless from before, the three-year average.
Got it. And then, just two last questions I have here. Can you give maybe like an example of the kind of like trade-offs, or I guess, decision-making that, that we're making when it comes to this? I know we, we like share like our focus area of being on staying away from the classroom. But I guess I'm trying to see, like, can we put this in, in terms for people to understand that, like, oh, like, yeah, we could reduce a class, you know, or we could increase class sizes by three students, or we can, you know, get, you know, reduce the amount of professional development, I guess. Does, does an example like that potentially come to mind, or something maybe a little bit illustrative of, of kind of that kind of decision-making?
Well, I think, I think, and, you know, Rob and Christine jump in. But I think the priority was obviously to stay away from the classroom, the students, and, and the learning, but also, like, the least impact to people, right? What can we do that's really not going to impact the person or their, or their job, or how they do their job? So that's kind of the primary thing is, and because we're coming off of having 13% COLA, and so we do have things in the budget that probably don't need to be there ongoing. And so we just, and it's, it, those, some of the things that we're talking about, like the professional development, is stuff that is normally reviewed every year anyway. And not that we haven't been reviewing it, but we're just sort of maybe, you know, instead of reducing it by 5,000, we might reduce it by 10,000, or something like that. But really, you know, what's the least impact to the student learning, and then what's the, the least impact to the individual or their, how they can get their job done?
Got it. Okay. Perfect. And then the last one is, is just kind of on slide five, also kind of doing some, like, just back-of-the-envelope calculation and, and trying to illustrate, I guess, the importance of ADA, you know, for this hypothetical, you know, TK or third-grade student. Essentially, every day that they miss of school is like $50. And so I think, you know, as we're trying to think about these decisions, I think having, you know, these absolute numbers in mind can be like so helpful in thinking about this. Because, you know, I think the, the tongue-in-cheek thing that I think about saying is like, well, if we could hand a kid 40 bucks, we get $10 back. And so, you know, how can we be creative and really think about how we can get, you know, students to school, understanding that that's much easier said than actually done. But, yeah, is, is my math there, there right? It is about $50, I think, per day?
Yeah.
Assuming like 180-day school year.
Yeah. Prior to the pandemic, a lot of districts would, you know, a lot of school sites would put on their marquees, like, you know, if your student misses a day, you know, we're losing $30, or whatever it is at the elementary schools. I mean, that, that was a thing prior to the pandemic. Haven't seen it since then, but.
Was that helpful?
I think it makes parents aware, mostly for parents that might not take, not bring their school, their kid to school to go on a vacation or something.
their kid to school to go on a vacation or something, you know? Just, I think, I think it was, I think it was helpful, actually. Because I used to hear, when my kids were in school, I used to have a lot of parents, hear parents talk about it.
I can tell you, when my daughter was in school, that would have just made me roll my eyes. But my, because my thoughts on absenteeism is how do we create a culture that's inviting? And it makes, because like I see my granddaughter, and my granddaughter will refuse to miss school. Like, we literally have to replan our vacations. She's like, I can't miss. I got mock trial, or I got this, or I got that. So I think just creating an environment where the kids want to be, then I think is, is, to me, more helpful. But that's one.
Well, I think that, I think the districts that did that assumed that they created this environment. And so they were just making it, you know, putting the parents on notice. Because sometimes they were doing vacations or things that, you know.
And I don't think.
Planned around school.
And I don't think it's an either-or thing, right? We can both like, yeah, like, create this culture where people want to go to school. And also, for some people, it does resonate that, you know?
And just make aware.
Every day, $50, let's bump it a week, $250 a week, $1,000. Like, it starts to, for some people, resonate, like, what's the value of education? And then for some people, that's an easier thing to digest. Any other questions that came up for trustees? Because I just want to say, I think, I think I'm very appreciative of all the work that's been done on this and the transparency that's being brought forth and having this conversation earlier. I think at times, it has been a little bit frustrating to feel like these things kind of come to us and then immediate decision and giving the space for community, for us, for staff, for everyone to kind of think through, like, how are these decisions being made? The opportunity to hopefully invite people to come ask questions at when it comes to our regular board meeting coming up. And make sure that all these things are being answered, that people understand that there is decision-making going on. I think sometimes people, or at least for me, like, what becomes most important is that people understand that it's not like these decisions are just being told what to do, but rather like there's considerations, there's values, there's trying to define what we care about as a school district. And I think it's so important to communicate that. We're trying to keep these decisions away from the classroom and for our students specifically. So I do really appreciate all the work that's being done in this. And I think, hopefully, the community sees that, you know, it's one of the skills that I think, as an organization, we've been growing a lot, is how do we communicate this out to people in a way that they can understand?
Yep, thank you. And I will say, I think there's been a lot of thoughtful conversation around sort of coming up with principles and guiding principles and, you know, looking at it as a whole and then kind of drilling down to the details. Because it's a lot, but definitely needs to be done.
Well, thank you so much. Great. Next, we have item to be Superintendent Search Services/Goal Development Consultation Services. Thank you so much for patiently bearing with us through that first item there.
Absolutely. Now, we were excited to listen and just hear, you know, the, as you said, the decisions that are being considered and just appreciate the transparency. And as you mentioned, just trying to do this early. We often come into the search space and it's not always that experience. And there's some surprises, and the budget this year has been tough for a lot of districts. So just appreciate hearing that. So again, good evening trustees and all the staff and the community who's joined. And just really excited again to come today. It's kind of our first board meeting with you. You'll see us a few times this year. And so this is all about you picking your next superintendent, which is your only employee and the most important decision you're probably going to make in the midst of all of this. So we're just honored to lock arms with you and want to just kind of walk you through a few things, make sure we get some information from you so that we can take that direction and get rolling. I do want to acknowledge Maya's been very helpful with connecting us to make sure everything's taken care of. So I think your last meeting, you got to approve the contract so we can officially make it, you know, an official kind of movement to the next step. So today, a couple of things, I know you have in front of you. Just want to make sure you have everything we're going to look at. So your advertising costs, you have the search calendar, and you have sample criteria, which we're going to talk about tonight, okay? And if you need to, Maya, for the community, definitely, if you want to share any of the documents we're going to reference. Okay, okay, Chris. Okay, perfect, perfect, yeah. So what we'll do, I think, first is, one, I have these folders, which I always offer to board members, because you're going to, by the end of all of this, you're going to have a lot of information. So sometimes it's nice to just have it in one place. So I want to offer that to y'all, but also I know sometimes you want to just go electronic and not have a whole lot of stuff. So I'll give that to you before we end tonight, so you can put everything in one place. But I want to start with just a conversation first about our search calendar. So I want to start there first, because that's going to drive everything. And so Bill and I are super excited, because what we did, and you may see that Dr. Daniel Moreo is not here with us today. He got sick. Unfortunately, there's a lot of people getting sick. So we're keeping him in our prayers and just hoping he, you know, rests up. And so he was sorry he couldn't be here tonight, but we said, yeah, just rest and rest. So what we want to do first is y'all have your search calendar out. So what we did is we looked at your board meetings, okay? We looked at our schedules, and of course, today, we need to consider your schedules. Because as we shared, there's some important deadlines and things that will happen. And these are things we want to make sure drives the entire process, including when we advertise. The candidates are going to see these deadlines, so we want to make sure tonight we can finalize that, okay? So hopefully, you've had a chance to take a look, but I'm just going to walk you through it real quick. And then some of the spaces on here, we're going to talk about tonight, like your stakeholder input sessions. Who do you want us to talk to? And we're also going to look at, again, the search criteria, okay? So the way we worked this out, hopefully, we gave you enough details, like more than enough, so you know exactly what's going on from start to finish. And then what we will do in between these meetings is we'll reach out to you individually via email, right? Just to give you an update. And then also, we'll reach out to you individually, because we do want to talk to you also as we get input from your stakeholders. We want to talk to you as well. So we'll also set that up for you. So let's start with just the first piece for January, the 24th through the 31st. That was us kind of preparing for a meeting with you and getting the process started. So we've pretty much covered everything there. We know that Maya is the point of contact, so she'll be hanging out with us quite a bit. And then also, we drafted the search criteria and the samples for you as well. I'm sorry, in the calendar. So for tonight, I want to kind of skip for a moment to the next piece where you see, you'll see consultant tasks. So just so you know, that's the stuff that we'll be doing behind the scenes, so you know exactly what's going on. Because every once in a while, board members may wonder, what's happening? And I want to know, just know, this is what's happening during the time. So after tonight, and actually, we've already started the process. You can see, we've started with, you know, actually recruitment and meeting with folks. We did get to go to the AXA Superintendent Symposium and got to pass out, I'll show you in a moment, the sample brochure, which we'll update once we get more information from you. We've gotten a chance to set up several documents that we'll be sharing with Maya so that it can really help make the process go. But my point is, we've already gotten started. So it is rolling. You are officially in it. And people are already excited, and there are folks asking questions, and we've already started to talk to people. So let's go to, real quick, just going through these dates. So I want you, I don't know if you even have your calendars with you, but I want to make sure all these dates work for you. So the next time we will come and see you is on February the 19th, which is what we call our second board meeting. It's about 30 minutes, which is kind of like tonight. It should be pretty short, but it is more than maybe a normal board agenda item, because this is our discussion with you, it's really important. So what we'll do there is we're actually going to go through and give you an update on the stakeholder input schedule. We'll make sure that the final criteria is ready to go. And then also, we'll talk about, do you want to have a stakeholder interview panel? So you don't have to decide that tonight, but we want to put that in your head, that you're going to have to decide that, so we can start to plan. You'll notice we'll start advertising the position, which we've actually started already. It's on our Mac and J, in our Mac and J queue. And then also, you have the recruitment we've done with the brochure. But tonight, we're also going to talk about where you want us to advertise. I want you to look at the next piece, February 17th through the 28th. Now, while this doesn't impact you, this is something we'll work with Maya to set up what we call two weeks of stakeholder input meetings, either in person or also virtually. And so we'll set up a schedule. Tonight, you'll let us know who you want us to talk to. You can even kind of look at where we're going to have the survey open up. So remember, people who can't come and see us will have a survey. So anybody can access the process. And we will want to find out from you also, how many languages you'd like that survey to be translated into, okay? And again, I'm just going through these real quick, okay? Just to make sure, and then we'll kind of go through sections at a time. You can see the next board meeting. There actually is, on March 19th, we're going to actually come to you. And this, again, about 30 minutes, on here, it says 15. I would say probably 30 minutes. And what we're going to do is share that stakeholder input report with you. So everything we hear, we're going to put in one report, we're going to share it with you. You get to see all the responses. We'll give you an executive summary, so you can see the maybe 100-page document. You'll see it in like two pages, right? So that you can see all the themes that came up for that stakeholder input process. And so that will be a public document, you can put on the website. You can share here in the district office, a couple of people may want to look at it. And then, of course, we share it with the applicants as well. And that gives us a great opportunity to just hear what your community is saying as well. And we'll talk again in a little bit more detail in a moment. The other piece that I did want to kind of throw in there, because it's a short meeting, you'll get an update. But also, there may be some space and time. Because I remember you talking about, you know, support you needed around not only that Phase 5 process, when we go through setting the goals and objectives. But there may also be an opportunity just to re-center around like effective governance practices, which a lot of boards don't get to do, especially when you have people who are new. So I thought that might be a way, those are normally like hours and hours, but we might be able to infuse a couple of things around just the role of the board, the role of the soup, right? What are the eight characteristics of effective boards? Maybe there's some protocols you want to consider as you get prepared for your next superintendent. And so that's something we've been thinking heavily about in doing these searches, which boards never get a lot of time for that, because you're just going and going. So we can talk about that maybe in our next meeting to decide if you want to carve out a little time. Definitely, you don't have a lot of time in a regular meeting, so we want to be mindful, usually that's study session time. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, that might be something you're interested in. You may notice, the next piece is the big deadline of closing the application. So if we open them up, we're looking at opening them. Once we get your kind of idea of when you want to advertise, we'll open those up pretty quickly. And I'm looking at the calendar going into almost next week. So next week, like the official, like, application. But what happens is, if we don't have a criteria done, then that will take a little longer. So ultimately, you'll have about a month and a half almost for like full-blown advertising, and then applications will be open for about a month, right? Which is more than enough time. There are people ready to apply right now, I'll put it like that. So March 27th is when we're looking at closing. Based on the landscape of recruiting right now, that's not a bad timeline, I think it's fine. And then you'll notice, what we'll do is after closing, we'll get those applications ready and then show them to you after we've screened and really kind of narrowed those down. We'll show those to you on, no, went the wrong way. On April the 8th, okay? That's a long meeting, so we're going to hang out for a good, I'd say, four to five hours, depending on how many applicants, depending on how much discussion. That's when you get to decide who you're going to interview, okay? So we'll decide if the 8th works for you. The interview, so we threw out a couple of dates, because we have some options. We wanted to give you more than just one space. Usually, it takes about two days. I'm just guessing you'll take two days. You may say one. But what we were looking at is potentially April 30th to May 1st, or May 1st and May 2nd. Okay, so that's something to consider around looking at the calendar based on availability. So just carving out two days, okay? Once those interviews happen, then you'll have, you know, your finalists. You'll have a couple of weeks to go through negotiations, background checks. And then what we looked at, based on your calendar, is May 21st is a regular board meeting, where you have to take action to approve that finalist, approve their contract. And then, you know, you announce, you go through that process, and then they would again start July 1st, which gives a good amount of time for the transition with your interim and allowing that to be like a smooth transition. So looking at that calendar, again, we're going to go through some of the details in there, but I just want you to look at the dates right now, okay? And let us know what you're thinking, what questions you have, because once we set it, this is kind of it, okay? And so we tried to do it around your board meetings, so you didn't have two meetings in one week. We tried to avoid, I think, spring break, I think. We tried as much as we could, but we need to get your input right now. And I know Maya had a chance to look at it, so I think we caught anything that might have been a conflict. But want to hear from you now, what's your thoughts? Bill, I didn't miss anything on here?
I don't think so.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah. So thoughts, questions about the calendar? And notice the ones that are highlighted for you, those are the key dates that affect you.
So it looks like outside of regular board meetings, we've added a special meeting on April 8th and then the two interview days. Otherwise, everything else is during a regular board.
Yes, yes, yep. That is correct. And again, I forget to say this, you are busy people, you have families, all that good stuff. So remember, once we set these, like, you can't miss, we're going to come find you. We have to have all five of you here for everything. Like, it just, yes, 100% 88, yes. We got to have you here, so, yeah, jump in.
So I guess I do have a question. I mean, this probably isn't something I wanted to disclose here on the candidates, but my brother is having surgery. And I'm his support person, and that is going to be on the actual 19th. I know that we had talked, it was discussed that we could possibly, I could join via Zoom.
That works.
And participate that way. I'm looking at Maya, because I know she coordinates this a lot.
No, March 19th, correct, or February or March?
It's March.
March 19th, yeah. That, that meeting is probably, I would say, the least impactful. There's not a lot of decisions you're making that night. Like, there are some things that may come up, we may ask you, but I think it's fine. If you join Zoom, I think it's perfectly fine. The big ones are the interviews, right, and that special meeting. Those are the two, we got to have all you there. So that one, I think, is perfectly fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do have a question. So the one for February 19th, is that the, the exact time that our meeting?
So thank you for catching that. Actually, your meetings start at 7:00, if I'm not mistaken, so we would adjust that to 7:00, yeah. I think the 4:00 PM was, I don't have a good reason, except what I shared earlier. And I'm going on 50, and that's, that just, it is what it is. Yeah, I heard it gets worse, yeah. But 7:00 PM is what I, that's what I say. And I'll update this for you all to get a final, final copy, yeah. Good catch, thank you. Other questions, those dates seem good? Wow, sometimes this is like herding cats, so I just want you to know, we're really excited those work. And so what we do need to do is definitely.
I'm still looking at my calendar.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, take your time. Definitely for the interviews, we do need to pick which dates. And if you're like, hey, we want to just keep all three of those carved out, because we're not sure, we can do that as well. We just have to make sure that whatever we choose, we have to share that with applicants, because once they apply, they have to know to put that on their calendar. And those are sacred days, so definitely, we want to.
Can we check on in May? I mean, I'm not sure, because the delegate assembly comes on, and I'm not sure if it's the first week or the second week. I don't have that.
Delegate Assembly, that's a great question.
I don't have it handy. Delegate Assembly is always in May.
I used to have it memorized.
Used to have it memorized?
Yeah, you're supposed to have it memorized. We used to have it, because it was a big, yeah.
It's usually a Saturday, Saturday, Sunday. And it's always in May.
For May, for the interviews, yeah. Yeah, we tried to give a couple of options. So 30 is, yeah, so we started, we went early in the week, so. One, two, yeah, so actually, it wouldn't be a Saturday or Sunday, actually, yeah.
It's not?
Yeah, and it would be during the week, yeah.
It does look here, too, May 17th to 18th is the delegate assembly.
All right.
17th to 18th, thank you.
I do have another question, as we're getting our calendars together. So April 8th, it's not a Wednesday, it's a Tuesday for that particular meeting, okay?
Yeah, that one's a Tuesday. Yeah, there's not really a rhyme or reason for those in particular, because we looked at all of our schedules, and that's why we wanted to present it to you as well, yeah. Outside of attaching to your board meetings. Yeah, so there's definitely, they're kind of in different spaces, yeah.
That's the, that's the one where they select the candidates, so that's.
Right, April 8th, yeah.
That's the moment.
Yeah.
So ideally, we're giving you the two interview days right now?
Those are the two, that's, that's the big one, and that, and then April 8th. The, yeah, those are the two big ones, we want to make sure work for all five of you.
I should be able to make all those work. I guess my preference right now, if it matters to anyone, would be the May 1st and 2nd, the Thursday, Friday, is more likely to be good for me.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep, we're open.
Works, so May 1 and 2?
It doesn't matter.
Either ones, okay, okay. It's Roger, yes?
I'm okay, as long as I have the 17th, 18th, that's what.
Oh, you're there, yeah. We will not interfere with that.
Just worried about that.
Yeah, we would not bother you then, yeah.
Yeah, I guess, to be even more specific, if it's one day, I'd prefer the Friday. If it's both days, Thursday, Friday.
Okay, so what, that's great that you brought it up. So once we get to April 8th, that's when you all will confirm. Because remember, you don't know who you're going to interview, you don't know if you're. You don't know if you have three or six, you name it. And you may say that we don't want certain things, or we do. If you have a stakeholder input or stakeholder interview panel, that would require you probably to have two days, right? Because it's a long, long, long day for everybody. So I think you can decide on the 8th, and, and, and if that's the case, you're like, hey, we're in one day, then definitely the second. But just remember, you want to give yourself grace around the deliberation. You don't want to rush it. So a lot of boards pick two days, and even if you have one day, you might say, hey, we're gonna come back the second day, we're gonna sleep, and then come and actually have a clear head when we want to deliberate versus being up at, you know, 1:00 in the morning, which I know y'all would never do that. But I, I did have that experience once, and, um, they needed to do it. But I, I definitely don't want you all to go through that, so... Yeah, all right. So we're gonna say May 1 and 2, and April 8th are good to go. All right. And so if by any chance anything comes up around a question, um, just, you know, through Maya, let, let her know, and we can, you know, make adjustments. But, um, right now, I think you're pretty solid, because everything really aligns with your board meetings anyway. And, uh, we can just decide what part of the agenda we're on for that, right? Just to make sure that works. All right. So with that being said, let's talk a little bit about, um, one of the pieces that you see on here, which is the, um, uh, February 3rd through March 20th, which is advertising the position. Okay? So if possible, could we put up the advertising costs on the screen? If that's okay, just so y'all can get a little sense of what that looks like. So first, what I'm gonna do while you are getting prepared for that, I'm gonna hand you, um, the sample, I shouldn't know what to do with sample, the first version of your brochure that we used, because we needed something very quickly to go to the AXA conference. So you'll notice on the brochure, um, it's a two-pager, but you'll probably most likely do four, which will include the criteria, you name it. But you'll notice on the back that, um, your occupations, we're gonna update just a few words on there. I think, uh, President or none, because we didn't have the correct one, so we put, we're gonna update that for the next one. So this was just, get this out, right? What we had at that time. Maya, I know you were trying to grab it quick. So again, we're gonna update that to make sure they're act, they're, they're more accurate, um, with the exact terminology. But we were pretty close with everyone. Okay? So I hand those to you.
Thank you.
And so again, what you have in front of you is the first version, first draft of the brochure. So that's one version of advertising. And what'll happen is, once we get the criteria set up, then you'll have four pages, if that makes sense. And so it'll include the criteria, and then also it'll include information about AUSD, right? What do you want us to, like, brag about, right? What are the things that we need to put on there to really give good information? So, um, there is a document that we'll work with, with Maya, and, and your staff usually comes up with a couple of pictures, things like that. So we'll update that. Okay? Um, so I'm not sure if you have any questions about the brochure, but again, that's version one, and it'll be updated. But any questions or thoughts about the brochure? Again, it'll be hard copy and also electronic. We'll make sure you all have a few here, if you want to have those at the front. All right, did I give out my advertisement? All right, no questions? Okay, all right. All right, so what we're gonna do is, you notice on the screen, there's a list of advertisement, um, around what it might cost for you to advertise this position. And so you'll notice in the search calendar, we've had some, like, traditional ones that most boards use, but you'll see there's a laundry list of things. So the more you pick, the more it costs. Um, I will say that because you're what I call an attractive district, I don't think you need to put a lot into additional advertising, but there are some basic things that we definitely recommend. So obviously ED Cow, which, um, is the, the version of AXA, right? AXA is Association of California School Administrators, and people are very accustomed to turning to the back of that first, where all the jobs are, right? That's kind of an ongoing joke about us that worked at AXA and were members. So that's definitely a space you'd want to place it in. Um, there is a fee there, and you can see it, um, on the list down, kind of in the middle, and you can see there's a fee there for running it based on the number of days. Um, and there's an online piece, and there's also a print version. Okay? Um, you see also the McPherson and Jacobson website. So that's our site, so that's not an extra charge, that's just really part of the service. Um, and you'll see it on there as well. Um, another one that's really popular is EdJoin. So usually your HR department uses EdJoin to post, um, whatever mechanisms you also use within HR, you can do as well. But EdJoin, definitely, we'd recommend. Um, I just showed you the brochure. And another one is EdWeek, which is also another one that has been used. Um, there's a few more you see on here, like AASA, and because remember, we are a national search firm, but we ultimately do a lot of our marketing here, right? Based on local. But you'll see that it is something that will show up, um, also in the national space. Um, you have Partners like CASA, which is the California Association of African-American Superintendent's Administrators. Um, you have CAUSA for our Latino administrators and superintendents. You have CAPOL for Asian-American and Pacific Islander administrators. So you have a couple of partner associations, which we have relationships with. Um, so there's very minimal cost for that. Um, so, and, and we're very active there, so a lot of times it's almost the advertisement happens by just being present. And there is a conference actually coming up for CASA where we will definitely make sure we, um, actually, I think your application will be closing that week, so we'll make sure that that's there. So you can kind of see, there are a couple of different options there, uh, but we do need to hear from you what you would prefer. Okay?
Do people have any thoughts they'd like to share right now?
I do. I, I would, I, I'm really interested in having a diverse candidate pool, so definitely NABSE and ALAS.
Mm-hmm.
And then the Asian-American one that you...
Mm-hmm, CAPOL, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And some of them may not be listed on here, because some of them actually don't charge, right? They just are partners, and so there's some who have become more, um, established, and then they start to charge a fee. But I'll double-check on CAPOL for sure. It, it, I'm sure it's very minimal, but I'll double-check. Um, so all the affinity groups that we listed, um, California and national, there's multiple ones, um, like NAPSE is one, um...
Is that the difference? Because I noticed you used a different acronym when you said...
Yeah, so NAPSE is the National Alliance, and then you mentioned, like, ALAS, right? So those are two national associations, so...
So for the national associations, do a lot of those people have California administrative credentials, or no?
It's a good question. So typically, no, but it's, I won't rule that out. And so this is one thing you're gonna put on your job description, is what do you prefer versus what your requirements are? So we'll actually kind of come to that, that space. Um, you have some people who have left and come back to California, so it's a variety. So it's really hard to say, but I think you all have to share that of what you prefer and what you require for the job. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, my thoughts are, I think similarly, like, I think the affinity groups, kind of like all of them, make sense.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, the places that I think are like, people I think expect to see that this, especially for us, like EdJoin makes, yeah, a lot of sense, those kinds of things. Um, yeah, I mean, I think, a- and I think I'm leaning towards broader rather than not, because I think, at the end of the day, these are negligible, negligible costs when it comes to finding a superintendent, and even in the cost of, like, what's going on here, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and remember, the network is, is large. Like, we had a California superintendent who is the executive director, a couple of them who were, was the executive director for, like, ALAS. So the network is still really important. You may not necessarily have that person come from another state, but it may be that they know people here. So I think that's what's really powerful, is just cast your net, um, and not assume that it, that people don't know each other, so... Um, so I want to repeat what I heard. So ED Cow, uh, EdJoin, EdWeek, yes? Okay? I heard ALAS. I heard CAPOL, CASA, CAUSA, which is all California. And then, did I hear NAPSE? Because NAPSE is on the list, did I hear NAPSE as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I got, uh, oh, yeah, I didn't, oh, yeah, I got ALAS there. Yeah, and I think that is it, that we, I mean, that's what we'd recommend. There's a few, every once in a while, you have some folks, yeah, but I think that's more than enough, for sure. Um...
And then again, not that it's a huge concern of mine, um, but do, do you have, just off what you have on the list, maybe like a quick back of the envelope, like, about how much that, that we're paying for that?
Yeah, so, um, without pulling out the calculator completely, one of the things that, um, you all have something very close to what we did before, there's a few costs that went up like 20 bucks here and there, but it appears you're gonna be somewhere... You had EdJoin, where was CASA? There's a few, and there's one I gotta check, like CASA, CAPOL, I gotta double-check on their pricing.
Sure.
Um, so you may be somewhere in the, the range of 1,500, give or take. And that's, and it's typically, most are about 13, right? That's usually about it. The prices go up every year, as you can imagine, like everything else. But what I'll do is I'll make sure we give, we always give a summary of the board meeting, and we'll make sure we have the exact price for you. One of the things we gotta check as well is based on, like, AXA runs it, you know, so often, and so we also want to just double-check, so we don't give you the wrong amount based on when they run it. Because they run it, you have to get it in, like, they, they have a week before, it's a whole process. And then also with EdJoin, just based on when you close, it may not be the full 60 days, right? So I'm giving you ballpark about 1,500, which, give or take, right? Yeah, so, um, and if something drastically changes, we'll let you know before we do it, but I don't expect that. And to your point, it is a very small amount for what you're trying to do. Yeah. Yeah, so, good on that. All right.
Can I, can I ask?
Oh, yes, please, please.
So do you pay these, or do we do POs and pay them in the district?
Oh, good question. Yeah, so, great question. You're like, wait a minute. Um, so this is part of our search process, and so what you'll find is Mec and Jay does invoicing, right? So we kind of take care of everything, and then the invoicing will show. Because remember, we had the not to exceed a certain dollar amount, right? So what you'll see is the breakdown based on advertisement, what's included, and what might be additional. So we do the invoicing, send that to you, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, good question. We try to make it as least, uh, less, yes, less, less on your plate as possible, yeah. All right, Bill, I for anything? Think we're good? Good, good? Okay. All right. So now, onto the next piece. Y'all doing okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, all right. So what we're gonna do next is we're gonna jump into the criteria, actually, no, I want to go... Let's do the criteria last, because that takes a little bit more of our brain power, okay? Um, and that's a super important piece. So I want to go into the stakeholder input process, okay? So if you can flip to the page, it's the third page, and you'll see kind of a list of stakeholder groups that are very typical for a search, okay? So this is not all-inclusive, but it's pretty typical of the people that most boards want us to talk to. And so, again, during this process, we talk to them, we have four questions that we ask. The first is what's good about the community, right? Because we want to make sure we can really brag about it, um, and really highlight. Second question was good about the school district and the schools. Third question, what are the issues and things that this new superintendent should be aware of? And then the fourth question is, what do they want to see in terms of characteristics, attributes, skills? And so really, what is that, that kind of criteria they want to see? And so those four questions are asked during input sessions, and those are the same four questions that are on the survey. Okay? And so what happens is, we, we have kind of a, notice the list has come, a kind of a, a little bit of a method to the madness. So you'll see that we try to split certain groups up, so we want to hear site administrators, district administrators separately, because those sometimes have different perspectives, right? And also, there's a level of safety when you have supervisors in the room with their, with those they're supervising. So we want to make this as safe as possible for people to be able to be vulnerable, because people can be very nervous during this process, okay? Um, it is, by the way, an anonymous process. So we say that to them, that it's anonymous, we don't take names, all we do is put numbers and a category. That's it. And that's the same for the survey, so that you can see how many administrators, how many teachers, how many parents, how many students. So it's anonymous, and the only time we see names is when we're talking to them, but that does not go in our report by any means. Okay? And so these groups, you can see here, pretty much covers everyone, but we know that there's some folks that might be missing on this list. And you may not have that all tonight, just keep that in mind. It's something that we usually work with Maya on to kind of create a schedule, and it may be that something comes up and you say, hey, we want you to talk to the mayor, we want you to talk to this particular community group. Um, I, I know there was an issue around the Amtrak train, right? And that kind of piece around the concern. You might want us to talk to the groups that are part of that, that process, right? What is, what's impacting your district? So there may be people you want us to talk to, right? Um, and then it's open also to folks, so anybody can join, right? Even people might not be part of your community, but may be familiar, so anyone can join, but we wanna know who you want us to talk to. So let us know on this list who we might be missing, and then there may be one or two that you're like, that's not relevant for us, but let us know. So just kinda, you know, sharing out, um, if there's any groups, and again, Maya will, um, work with us to, you know, outreach to them. We have a whole process and, and invitation to be sent out, but just wanna get a sense of who you'd like us to talk to. Including yourselves, remember, we'll do that individually.
Any particular thoughts to share? Yes, Trustee Brett?
Um, there's an organization called NAMI, N-A-M-I. They focus on mental health. The director and the chairperson is Gigi Crowder.
Okay.
Um, I think that would be a perfect person to add to the list in regards to helping our students with their mental health, giving them tools and, and, um, resources.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up, because I think, is it not on here? No, it's on there, so I have special education, um, parent, and also staff. Sometimes what happens is we don't wanna lump that into like a broad category of parents or staff, there's specific issues around special education, which sometimes that's a sacred space to have. So I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, definitely, to speak to, um, to Gigi, but also, um, keeping in mind why we put special education on there, it's kind of a separate group with their various, um, unique, um, needs, right? And wanna hear families and hear staff, and maybe even students.
Yeah, Trustee Lathan.
Mm-hmm. Um, so it feels like, when I'm looking at the list, most are applicable. We don't yet have a student board representative.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, it feels like most of these other ones are applicable.
Yep.
I would, even the city government is excellent. Um, Trustee, um, Kobo Smith and I just had our first city schools, uh, committee meeting with two city council people. Um, the both of us, the city manager and the Parks and Recs director, I think his title is. And so, um, we, I think that would be great to interview those folks, because we will then be working with them on this committee.
Perfect.
To strengthen the, uh, relationship between the city and the school.
Okay, excellent. Perfect. And those are, are very unique, cuz they're super busy people. Um, so when, sometimes what we'll do is just let, we'll say, Maya, hey, just have them schedule something individually. It might not work for the calendar that we give, but we'll just do it like separately, and we just make it work. So, um, definitely, we'll, um, do outreach for them as well. All right.
Trustee Kobo Smith?
I'm just wondering, so are these, like, a given? This, this, or are you asking us to tell us specifically from these lists which ones we?
So these are pretty highly recommended. If you miss any of these folks, that's probably not a good idea. Um, but, um, you can add to it, because things like affinity groups, like, there are groups that I may not know about, right? We are not aware of, because every district is unique. So these are kinda like given, yes, I would say we highly recommend, and then, um, you may have some additional ones you think we should cover. Um, and if you're not sure, sometimes the community ones usually can capture, like, anyone who doesn't fall in some particular category. And those are usually the open forums, um, that we have that anybody can join. Yeah. Yeah.
I do have a recommendation. Okay. Um, we, we do have, I'd imagine, student reps from the schools.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm hoping that the two young ladies who presented last week, or the last meeting, FIFTA and Kaylani or something like that. Uh-huh, okay. Um, they were on the Equity Ad Hoc Committee, the two students, excellent, and they know kind of the challenges and the strengths we have in our district, but also in their individual schools. I believe they go to Antioch High School. And so it'd be nice that, even if we have other student reps, if they're invited to participate.
Yeah, I like that. Um, one idea, and this sometimes requires a little bit of extra work on the principals, so I don't wanna volunteer them for more, cuz I know they got a lot going on, but one thing that also helps is, um, we'll come, typically, we do like a day or two, depending on how this works, right, in person. And we could come like a day and kinda rotate, maybe go to a few schools, but sometimes it's nice to have like the leadership class, right? Um, who actually, we do the same questions, we just have them do it more in small groups, share out, get input from them, um, cuz those discussions are helpful, so we can be creative about how to also talk to kids. Um, sometimes it's nice to have a small group, but then also it may be specific ones you really want us to hear from. Um, and then we also would love to use them as like ambassadors to get the survey out, right? Um, so at each school, they know, like, usually, a lot of times they'll take a survey from their peers versus from the adults. Um, same exact questions, so we can be creative about how to do that, yeah. Okay. And, you think we covered them all?
I think Trustee Lathan had one more comment.
Yes, um, affinity groups.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm not sure how we would do it, but it would be nice to, the, the largest population of students are Latino students. Um, and that's not, we can't say they're all English learners, so I just wanna make sure that Latino students are, their parents are involved. And then the second largest is African-American.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it'd be nice to have two affinity groups where parents can just share
Yeah.
um, their experiences and what they're looking for in a superintendent.
Let me ask you something, have you done those type of, um, meetings or forums in the district? Like, are there spaces where that's happened?
So we've had, oh, sorry, that was really the... Um, we have our, so we have a parent advisory committee, we have an African-American parent advisor committee, and we have a standing D-LAC that meets regularly, that is well-representative.
Okay.
Um, I think that's a good place to start, um, but I would invite additional.
Okay.
And I would also, if I, while I'm on the mic, um, I think being able to spend some time with our, um, students in our continuation high schools
Yeah.
super insightful, super insightful. And they are very well, they can articulate very well, um, I think what hasn't worked and why it works for them in their alternative setting.
Okay. Yeah, so that might be good for a one-dayer, we just come and just do rotation to all the schools, yeah, that, that'd be helpful. No, I appreciate, and the reason I ask that question, because I also want to, uh, make sure we're really transparent about while it's outreach into an affinity group of students, that it's open to everyone. Um, cuz we have seen where some will feel like, well, wait, I can't come because I don't fit in that category, so we wanna be really mindful of how we advertise it, so we can kinda strategize on that. Um, just avoid anyone not seeing that, we're not, not wanting to be inclusive, but definitely wanna hear perspective, right? So I love A-PAC being one, one group, and then D-LAC representing English learners, but I also heard you say our Latinx community, so I think we have to be really clear that there's a delineation, um, as well. So what we may, um, what might help is sometimes also strategizing, again, with principals who have had maybe opportunities to engage with students based on their ethnic identity, um, while also making it open to all, so I think that's super important. Um, and I can share some challenging stories of districts or schools that didn't do that well, and, um, it, it kind of distracted the purpose of that process, so I'm glad you brought it up, yeah. All right, anybody else? Y'all got a good group here.
I'm sure that under community, you're gonna find some of these organizations also that might not be listed.
Yeah, but we need you all to tell us too, like, I, I'm not, I don't live in the community, so I don't wanna say that I would know who, but...
If we find somebody that can fit that community.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And part of this, so one of the things you gotta do is, is y'all have to advertise, right? So that's one of the things, once you have it, there's an invitation process where there's like direct invitation, but also you gotta push it on your website, you gotta push it to use, I mean, again, I feel so bad, principal, I love principals, and they're like, this lady is trying to give us more work. But, you know, sometimes using your site leaders, right, to, to advertise in their school community is super important. Your newsletters, you know, any communication, social media, you gotta get it out there so that you can get the voices, cuz people are surveyed out, I just wanna be clear. And they're meetinged out and everything, right? And so we do wanna make sure that that's, you know, very clear that we're having those sessions. So some of your, you know, board meetings that are coming up, some, you only have one. Yeah, your next board meeting you got coming up, I believe, the nineteenth, yeah, yeah. We'll still be doing the advertising, or the input session, so just also, just sharing that also from the days as well.
Can I ask a quick question around interpreters? Do you have those, or should we provide those? Do we need to coordinate with you?
Yeah, so typically, we utilize the district interpreters for a couple of reasons. One is there's a culture of interpretation, and there's a safety. So we often ask that you have your interpreters for those sessions for the groups that need them. Um, for, one thing I'm glad you also asked, because the surveys, we do need to identify the languages. So we assume, based on your population, that we have English and Spanish, but do wanna ask if you have any other additional languages that you want us to translate the survey into.
Are the surveys electronic by any chance?
Yeah.
Uh, cuz I know...
We can print them too, as well, if someone needs it printed.
We utilize forms, and there's an ability for the, for the, uh, surveys to be translated. So it's just a matter of them clicking, so it's kind of a language accessibility piece, I don't know if that's...
Um, I'll check with our home office, we do it on our end. So what we do is we have the survey, and it actually is in one survey, we've actually condensed it, it used to be like two separate, do the Spanish, do English, so now it's in one space, and it's in, it's listed in the same survey. And so what we do is we do the interpretation, we send it to you first to make sure that it is accurate and it fits what your community needs. So sometimes we'll say, have one of your bilingual, you know, tutors or someone in the position to translate, make sure it's good, and then from there, you can use that. So it's, it's already kinda done for them, you don't really have to do it, um, unless you want extra work to do. You're like, no thanks. Yeah, so, so those two languages, would you say, Spanish, English, or should we add anything?
You can add Cantonese.
Cantonese, okay.
Cuz I know that's unfair.
I guess, I guess some, to that language question, I guess I'm wondering if we have data on our end of like, you know, percentage of families, and maybe identify like an appropriate cutoff that like, you know, if at least five percent, ten per, whatever feels, I think, appropriate.
It, it's your search, so we'll do whatever you want. Um, if you feel like, you know, we have five families, um, that's probably not the best use of interpretation. But again, it's, it's what we're doing, so if you need it, we'll do it. Um, most districts, um, that we've worked with, specifically Bay Area, has typically been Spanish, English, but we've had Tagalog, we've had Vietnamese, we've had several languages depending on the community. So if you feel Cantonese is one, we'll place that in there.
Yeah, I think it might, I think Mandarin might actually be better, cuz most Cantonese speakers can actually, um, can, can actually... Cuz Mandarin is typically written Chinese language.
Yep.
Um, but, um, another population that I've heard about in the community a lot is Farsi, Farsi speakers.
Okay, we got it.
Do we, do we have the data, I guess, or data specifically on like, this is a percentage of, yeah, okay, great.
All right.
Okay, perfect, cuz I think that, that's, I think would be, what I feel would be the best, like, guiding, rather than to like, you know, get, yeah.
Okay. Well, we will plan to open the survey on the seventeenth, I believe, was our date, so we still have, you know, a couple of days for y'all to decide, and, um, just let Maya know, and we can, uh, make sure we let the home office know what the final plan is. But, yeah, we plan to open it on the seventeenth, is the same time we're starting the, the input sessions, and then we'll close it on the twenty-eighth. Um, we usually do five o'clock our time, um, but it's open the whole entire time. Um, and speaking of that, those input sessions, let's say people come, they give input, and then they wanna add more input, cuz maybe they feel like I need a private space to say this, or I just forgot, and I need to share something at one in the morning. They can take the survey as many times as they want. And all goes into the same report, and verbatim, what you'll see is what people say, with the exception of curse words, people's names, and, you know, just any kinda ta- attack on someone, we just, we don't do that. Um, you know, we, we can, you know, at some point, share it with you as the board, um, the, the raw data, but this is a public document, so we redact to, um, to make sure we're honoring people's privacy, and it's not about bashing people. That's not helpful for us, but it does, it shares with us what how people feel, but any names, any like profanity, things like that, um, we take out.
That's it, Trustee Lathan, and then Trustee Kobo Smith.
I'm trying to figure out how to frame this, but...
Speak your truth.
While you've been talking, um, so the invitations that you'll share with Maya, that she'll send out.
Yep.
How do you then get back, like, isn't an RSVP thing, and I'm saying this because I guess people are busy, like, and communication can be a challenge.
Yeah.
Something that we're, we need to work on, and so I just wanna make sure folks
Show up.
respond to Maya, and then, you know, show up.
Yeah, it's a tricky one, so we've had a few moments where we came, and we were just, me and Bill would shoot the breeze, cuz no one showed up, right, on the Zoom. But also, um, it's tricky, we don't necessarily do RSVP. Um, I think those are moments where we have specific people that we're setting up. So, for example, like your union presidents, right, and executive leaders, right? Those are typically like, hey, what works best, and these are the times, and they show up, right? So those things usually work, but it, we don't do an RSVP. Um, typically, because one, that's a whole nother response, on top of then show up. Um, what you are looking for, which I'm, I'm not too worried about it, but typically, based on your size of your district, we look for three to five percent, if we get that, like, uh, input based on that rate, that's a good thing. You get a good, good amount of, of folks. So what we'll do is we'll give you an update on where we are, right? We'll see on the nineteenth, it'll be just starting, but what we'll do is we'll give you email updates here and there, and you can see like, hey, here's the percentage we've had, you know, of parents so far. And what it does, it actually shares like, hey, we probably need to push this out a little more. Um, or are we getting great feedback, let's keep it going. So we'll, we'll have to kinda gauge it once we're starting, yeah.
Survey's pretty powerful, too. And we, we, we had some of those empty rooms, um, recently. Uh, we had some empty rooms, but we really encourage people to use the survey. And so they put a lot out in the survey, and we were looking at that data, and it was really kinda rounded out what we already had. The other thing was really kinda interesting, and I'm, and I'm assuming this is kinda what we see typically, is what, certainly what I've seen, is there are a lot of themes that bubble to the top, you know, that are, you know, common among the various groups, just certain things that you'll see. And things you probably already know, but, um, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm looking... So I'm looking at, um, based on your, um, your student population, which was fifteen thousand eight hundred and nine. Yes, might've changed, might've changed yesterday, yeah. But based on that, um, and doing the math, three percent of that is about four hundred and seventy-five responses. So what we would do is say, hey, like, you know, we're at this point, you need to push it out, um, or we're doing really well. So be, anywhere between three to five percent would be a good sample size to give you a good sense of hearing the community. And again, you would hear what categories they represent, so you know that this is student voice versus parent voice. Yeah. All right.
We do have a question. So out of that percentage, you then bring it to us, I mean, you then search for candidates to be interviewed based on the majority of what the survey said?
Oh, good question, so, no. Um, what we're doing, so the purpose of the survey and the, the stakeholder input report in, in general is a couple of things. One is to share with you, what is your community feeling about this role, cuz you should know, right? You don't want a person to walk in and we're not really aware of what the community feels, right? And it's, so that's one, you understand, so it helps you with the lens on what your community is feeling. The second is it helps us, because we're learning, right? We're not part of the community, as I said before, and we will never pretend like we're part of the community. It helps us to know what are some of the things that people are feeling, specifically that third and fourth question, what are the issues? What do they wanna see, because it tells us like how to better think about what that match might be. So if a theme, like Bill said, comes up around budget, for example, right, or special education, you name it. Those are things that let us know, when we're recruiting, we probably wanna make sure that person has that experience, right? Because if they don't, then that's kind of a setup, right? So it helps us a lot with what the community feels, and remember, it's not just community, it's your staff, right? It's, it's everyone, so that helps us a lot. And then what's really nice is the applicants get to see it too. And they love it, right, because it's their kinda research, right, that they're getting to know, like, you know, is this a district I wanna apply for? And also, they, they just are so thankful to know ahead of time, this is some of the things that I'm going into, because most don't have time to come and, you know, immerse themselves for a month and live here, and I had one candidate do that, um, which was amazing. Um, but, you know, we'd love for them to do that, we, we recommend it, but this is also for them, yeah. And then also, I would say the fourth is the community gets to see their voices being heard, right, which is super important. That's why we say stick it on your website, share it, um, it's interesting to see. And then, honestly, when that person comes on board, like, that document comes back out, cuz those themes around the issues, right, there's, some of those things are like immediate, and some are more long-term, so they get to see, like, in their first, you know, a hundred-day plan, there might be some things they need to get on right away that, that shows up in that document. So it's actually pretty powerful. Yeah. Yeah, but it does not drive your decision, I wanna say that. Your decisions are based on a variety of things, including their application, right, including the reference checks, the interview process. I mean, you have a lot to consider, but that definitely gives you all kind of a, a lens on how you start to kinda think about how you narrow down what you wanna consider as your finalists. Yeah. So thanks for asking that question, because sometimes the community kinda forgets, this is your process, right? And that does not, they do not get to tell you who they want, right? They get to give input, and that's why we call it input versus recommendations and telling the board what they want, which is sometimes what people feel, right? But, and rightfully so, they, they wanna voice, community members wanna voice, but also, um, you are the ones hiring that educational expert, you're one employee, so thank you for that question. Yep.
Trustee Kobo Smith, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I wanted to, um, circle back to how we left the language and interpretation, um, conversation.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, just help me understand, is there an extra cost for each language? Like, you said that you translated the survey?
Yeah.
So, and then the interpretation, obviously, we would carry that. Um, so then I, in the, in the spirit of centering on the margins, I would actually, even if we only had five families, I would hope that we would reach out to those families in a language that is supportive for them.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
No, it's fine with me, yeah, it's, it's not a big deal at all. Um, what we'd wanna do, though, is just make sure we share it, you know, you all take a look before we put it out to make sure it's, it's sitting. Like, our translation's been pretty good, um, that we've done through the home office, but just wanna make sure it fits your community needs.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that, I'm of the same mindset, this one person that needs it, we gonna do it, so, yeah. Um, okay, good stuff, good stuff. Um, I did, before we go to, sorry, is that everyone's question? I wanna feel good about our last, we're getting to our last piece, so you all can get out of here. All right, so I did wanna mention one piece that is important at the board, considered through the process, um, is that, um, when in moments you have, um, what we call an interim position, right? Um, interim superintendent, I do wanna make sure that you're mindful about being conscious of what we call the optics of what could be perceived. So this is my, we say this to any board who has interims, right, is that an interim can apply for the job. Um, internal candidates who work here can apply for the job, but we wanna be really clear and very transparent that it is an open process, and it's fair, and that there is a process to this, and there is no particular, um, shoo-in is what people will say. Um, and we've had that happen, so I just wanna make sure I say it to you, that we wanna ensure that there's not a perception, because people will not apply when they feel like that. We've had that happen, where some will say, hey, we just feel that way. So what we often say to people is that, look, again, transparent process, the board hired us for a reason, right? We're not here for a dog and pony show, just to go through and say we checked the box. And I know that genuinely, that's why you brought us on. But I wanna say it publicly, because I wanna make sure that it is clear for anyone going through the process is open, and they gotta go through like anyone else. We also, um, whether interim or retiring superintendent, um, who is sitting in that seat in that moment, we also do not include them in the process, for any reason, whether they're retiring, interim, you name it. It is literally the board, the point of contact, and there are times that the staff obviously is needed for certain things, but we do not include that person in the process. So we'll, you know, let Dr. Wayne know, um, definitely, just cuz we often sometimes feel bad, like we're ignoring them, but we, we don't include them for a variety of reasons, and one of those I just shared, right? It is, it has to be a process that is very transparent, um, fair, and we don't ever want it to be perceived that way. And that's out of protection for the board, right, and for even the candidates as well. So I just wanna say that, because that, that, you're, you're in a situation, you have an interim. Okay, any questions about that? Okay, all right. So last but not least, the most important thing we need before you leave out of here is if you can pull up the sample criteria that we shared with you. And so what you'll notice is out of numerous searches we've done, not all of them, but what we have is, we call them five criteria, which basically is the job description, right? So when we're recruiting, we need to know, you know, what you really wanna see in this next superintendent, and, um, this is the lens we use for the interview questions, for when you're gonna deliberate, but it drives the entire process. So what you do tonight is super important. Now, um, based on how much review you've done of these, um, we're gonna try to get as much from you tonight, but do recognize that you may feel like, I need an extra day or so to ponder this and, and get back to us, and that's okay. This process is not one where you take action on, right? But you do need to kinda approve, um, this, so that we can say this is what is gonna be advertised. Okay, so what you see here, you'll see the first one is Vallejo, um, was this yours? That was your, yeah, I just thought about that. So that was Vallejo, um, job description. Um, the next one, San Carlos, which is a little bit smaller district, you have Evergreen, uh, that's another elementary district. You have Pacifica Elementary District, and then you also have, I believe, did we put Hayward in there? No, Washington Unified, um, I was trying not to give you too much, um, which you probably feel like we did. Um, yeah, Hayward and then Washington, so you see some USDs, and then you see some SDs in there, right? Meaning that some are smaller, but you'll notice some, some commonalities around some of the language that you'll see. So there's five we wanna pick from you all. And so one of the ways... And so one of the ways that we thought might be really helpful is for each of you, um, to, and let me just, let me just pause for a second, make sure you all have a chance to just take a look. Okay? But I want to tell you kind of what might help tonight to, to get you to narrow down the focus. So on a piece of paper, I would love for you to just write five criteria that you feel is most important to you individually, okay? And so I want to give you just a chance to process. So you might see something like effective communicator, you might see a visionary, you might see equity leader, you might see, um, a, a community center leader. So I want you to write just your top five that you have individually, okay? Even if it's not on here, yeah, yeah. These are just samples, just to give you thoughts, but even if it's not on here, absolutely. Just want you to start there. Yes, you do. Yeah. Yeah, I was thinking this, yeah. Of, yeah, Pacifica, Evergreen. San Carlos, yeah. And then Washington Hayward, the layup, yeah, trying to give them a mixture. And so what I was thinking is depending on where they land tonight, we can give them, maybe till the end of the week. To finalize it, yeah. Yeah, my same think time. Well, now it depends on how much, yeah, and depends on how much they do their homework at a time. So, yeah, we'll see. Cause then we'll share it back with them, get a final approval. Not approval, but final. And actually, we come back on the nineteenth, they can tell us. No, no, they could tell us then, and then we just updated in the job description. But because we want to get it posted, we want to. You do, that's what says much we get tonight. That way they get it done like the week that we can have it done. And then get it posted because they should, you can't post it. They can post on the web, they just don't, can't do it. And practice. And practice a few times, yeah. But I have, um, so. So I have.
Oh, you're on schedule.
Yeah. Okay, I was looking for something. I was looking for the little miss real quick. I wouldn't be able to do it without it. Yeah. How we doing? Few more moments? You want to start, yeah? Okay, all right. So what we'll do is we'll just go down, you know, to each of you and ask for your top five. Just give us the phrase, okay? And then what we'll do after that is try to kind of narrow it down if we can and then give us maybe some examples of language you see in there that we might be able to capture, okay? So we're just going to start first with just the top five. Start down there, okay? Okay, so we'll go in order of how I wrote these down, okay? From bottom to, okay?
Okay. Um, top five, ethical leader.
Uh-huh.
Um, equity leader.
Mm-hmm.
Effective collaborator and communicator.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a passionate leader, um, they have to have a sense of reality. And then, um, a community-centered leader.
Got it.
And, and if you've picked those, don't feel like you have to change your answer. Just say it because we want to see what themes come up, too, okay? All right, go ahead, Oga.
Um, so I put a community-centered leader, um, a restorative leader, equity leader, visionary, and a communicator and collaborator.
Got it. Okay. Good stuff, all right, Antonio.
Cool. Uh, I put a student-centered, uh, visionary, strategic, uh, educational equity leader, effective community, community communicator, uh, hands-on, people-facing.
People-facing?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. Got it. All right. All right.
Hey, student-centered.
Uh-huh.
Communicator, equity leader, community leader, leader, and visionary.
Okay. All right, Dr. Jag.
Um, I added one that was not on there, um, systems thinker, one who can pull it all together.
Mm-hmm.
Um, an educator, so someone who really knows instruction. Um, effective collaborator and communicator. Um, equity leader with vision. Um, and executive manager, someone who has an executive presence. And student-centered slash community-centered. I tried to stay with five.
It's okay. We always have one, no, I'm kidding. So student-centered, say that last word?
Slash community-centered.
Okay, got it. That was like seven, no, I'm kidding.
I use slashes.
I know. The good part is there's some, some overlap, so this might actually work out. Okay, so what I'm hearing from y'all, and Bill helped me out, I'm hearing, I'm hearing, yeah, equity leaders come up quite a bit. Uh, you said ethical came up? Okay, okay, yeah. Um, com- uh, community-centered, I think, came up quite a number of times. I'm going to put that up there just to see if that sounds like, you heard that? Um, I heard collaborator communicator. Hearing that, too? And remember, some of these things are going to fold in, so the language will actually capture some things. Um, that's not what I just said. Communicator collaborator. Visionary came up a couple of times. Equity with vision, visionary, visionary, yeah. Visionary came up for you? Student-centered, yeah, and then student-centered came up. So then, all right, so I'm just, just real quick seeing what, what this sounds like and then we can fold some of these in maybe. So I'm hearing equity, community-centered, communicator collaborator, visionary, and student-centered. So I kind of heard that collectively. And then some things that maybe could fold in. I heard strategic and systems thinker, which I could see that showing up in potentially visionary and also potentially student-centered. They could show up in a few, so I know there's ways we can craft the language in there. Um, I also heard restorative and also passionate and then hands-on, people-facing, which to me, um, really speaks to maybe that communicator collaborator, um, or even community center. So I think there's a little bit of both maybe in that piece.
You could use that language, right?
Yeah, and I'm, yeah, the language could actually be used inside of those five. Um, and there was one more that stuck out. And I think that was all of them, and then the ethical one. So the ethical leader also could show up, um, under equity. Um, and then sometimes communicate, communicator collaborator, depending on how that language could look. And so do you feel like those five capture all of them?
Yeah. Yes and no. So when I think about our outcomes, and I know, I always tell people this, that's the autopsy. The CAFS scores, we know is past tense, right? It's done. Um, however, when we look at not just the CAFS scores, but just even just intermediate or talking to students and families, you can have all those things you named and still not change outcomes.
Yep.
And so somehow, including the educator piece, I like the one that's in the Vallejo one around student achievement and excellence and achievement. And in our equity audit, one of the main things that came out was that our staff and students don't necessarily consider themselves scholars, right? And that's about high expectations and achievement. And so somewhere in there around, we want to develop a scholarly, um, system where students know and believe in themselves and teachers and staff know and believe in them.
Yep.
And so do the parents. Like we know that when we come here, we can do whatever we want when we graduate. We can either go in the military, we can go to Stanford, Howard, I don't care what you do, trade, but you have the opportunity to do it because we've over-prepared you. And right now, the list we just gave, the kids might leave nice, but they might not need, leave prepared.
No, that's good stuff. I mean, as you were talking, I was thinking of all of them. But I was thinking of, you know, equity is one, as you know, you mentioned high expectations, um, outcomes, the data, right? Like the real data, not just, like you said, the autopsy data or data that doesn't really share the whole story. I also wrote down, because student-centered could also be that space where it's really about student outcomes. I can see that fitting there. And I wrote, um, in so many words, reimagining like student success. Cause I think though, the outcome data that is the traditional metrics, um, unfortunately, that, that's not fitting that equity mindset nor the student-centered piece. Because I think I hear you saying like, we really want to kind of interrupt a system that hasn't produced outcomes and we know our kids are brilliant, they're scholars, but the data may not reflect their brilliance. And as you mentioned, whatever they'd like to do, college, career, whatever life journey they have, really looking at that as success. So then I use the word data, I was thinking when you said outcome. So maybe language in there around like quantitative, qualitative data. Um, and someone that has that track record of understanding how to use that, um, is kind of what I'm hearing you say.
Yes. And that goes with the systems thinking piece, right?
With the, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I had that language too, your systems thinking. And I think all this language actually fits in all of these, but I wanted to try to narrow it to five that captures everything. And so can I ask you all to do something, kind of another layer of it? You mentioned some of the language you actually saw. So I heard like the language you liked in, I think it was Vallejo's, um, language around.
And educator, their first bullet.
Yep. So if you all can do me a favor and, um, based on the five that I just shared, equity, community-centered, communicator collaborator, visionary, and student-centered, if you can give a reference to some of the language that you might have liked, that you see there. That again, we're going to massage it based on your feedback tonight and share it back to you, but just want to see if there's anything that sticks out.
Can I ask?
You like the Vallejo?
Yeah, especially the one on community-centered.
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask a question before you do mine? Um, which one do you feel that the student-prison pipeline will fall under? Having a superintendent that really understands.
I would say, again, all of them, but I would say probably equity. I would say equity would be one, um, because you are talking about interrupting a system that has a trajectory, a system that has produced outcomes that are predictable, right? So that would be where I would put the language, but it, it does connect to student-centered too. But I would put it in, in equity. Yep. So you mentioned school to prison pipeline.
Nicole, um, San Jose.
Uh-huh.
Which is Evergreen School District. Their equity, the first line, the superintendent has a moral compass and courage to act upon all decisions through an equity, diversity, inclusive lens. Like, we need somebody who's bold.
Yep.
And kind.
Mm-hmm.
With their boldness.
Yep. A warm demander, right?
That sounds good.
Yes, yes, yes. Uh, so first, that first sentence?
Yes.
Okay. All right, more feedbacks. I heard Vallejo, community-centered, Evergreen, that equity, um, language.
I think Pacifica, the community-centered leader piece, I think captures some of this, like, I like the language bound, like being meaningfully visible in the community. And those pieces in there, I think are really great. I think, yeah.
I, in the, um, back to Evergreen, that last line, too. The, this leader actively engages in the interruption of policies, practices, and structures that perpetuate all forms of institutional oppression.
Mm-hmm. So that would be Evergreen equity?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Totally captures that. School to prison pipeline.
All right, very helpful. Anything else you see that sticks out?
Yes. It definitely would be, um, where is it? The Hayward one. It talked about one of the words that I'm passionate about. It talked about passion.
Okay.
It says the proven equity leader must be passionate, yet socially and emotionally intelligent.
Yep.
So if we.
Add all that in there, that will be great.
Yep.
And sticking with the Evergreen, um, in the communicator collaborator, there's a line that says the superintendent must be an inclusive leader, a team builder who is able to bring people together, establishing trusting, transparent, inclusive, and respectful relationships with the board, administration, staff, students, parents, and community. And I think that also folds in that restorative piece.
Yep.
Um, because I think our, we need, we need a little healing right now in our district.
I think similar to the comment I had with Pacifica, I think Washington Unified, their description for community leader, I think has some similar language and also some additional pieces that I think are really great about. Uh, especially like this, the superintendent is expected to be the person who invites the community to be involved with schools and likewise models the district's involvement with the community through their own participation in the life of the community.
Got it.
Yep. Okay, that's helpful. All right.
And I don't, I don't, thi- this might be in here, I haven't read every single part, but like a bridge builder, and yes, that's about communication. But just sitting on the dais and being an educator, sometimes it's difficult to know, like, like there is a gap missing between the board and the superintendent. And so someone who is, yes, an excellent communicator, but can also bridge the gap between what we know we're experiencing and what's happening and, and just having real dialogue around that.
Yep. So maybe calling out explicit language around board relations. Cause I think that's important as we're recruiting on what that looks like.
Yeah. And we're a new, newer formed board, right? So I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, I like that. And, um, I just, I was thinking about the Governance Core book. I don't know if y'all read that one, but, um, there's some really good language in there even about, um, I think it's chapter three and it talks about the type of leader a superintendent is, right? It gives like these examples and so, um, I could see where we could massage some language to make sure it's really explicit. Yep. Under, where'd it go? Communicator collab, yeah. And that was, what did you just, you just told me that was under Hayward. Well, I saw something under Hayward, that's what I meant to say. I saw it under Hayward. Um, you mentioned bridge builder, so I saw Hayward under effective collaborative communicator. Right in the middle, it talks about being inclusive, a team builder, brings people together. And some, one of you'd already mentioned that, but I think also there's language that we could develop around the board, board relations. Yep.
Um, can I, and I don't know where this fits in and I didn't, I didn't actually read it anyplace, but I was thinking, um, when Dr. Jag was talking about, you know, being student-centered, visionary, systems thinking, and just our outcomes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would like something like referencing, under- Um, I would like something like referencing, understanding the difference between removing barriers, not intensity, um, and to maintain academic rigor. Cause I just feel like a lot of times, the other side of likes, assuming that somebody's not capable of something is assuming that they're pitiable and that they can't do something.
Mm-hmm.
And so I, I would like to eliminate that, cause there's a difference between.
Yep.
There's nothing about somebody being poor that makes them inherent, inherently incapable.
Yep. Yeah, I think that'll connect well to the high expectations, um, and then maybe adding language around maintaining academic rigor. Um, and that could be one of the, this, when you mentioned removing barriers, and that could be maybe an example, we can add language there. Yep. 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 Now, this is good stuff. Y'all have a nice job description, I can add to the examples. This is a good one. All right, you feel like we've captured for the most part and got you okay? So here's what, um, we want to do, um, and thank you for doing this tonight, because the, the faster you can get it done, the faster we can post it. So what Bill and I will do is take our notes from what we've captured tonight, we'll send you what we call a draft criteria, and that criteria will then be what we just want, and we'll do, usually we do like a blind CC, right? That's usually the best way, um, just to give feedback to us. And then on the 19th, which is just in a couple of weeks, we can just double check with you, make sure you feel good about it. Uh, but we do want to get this rolling pretty quickly. So if you all are feeling like it's good based on your responses, we're just, we're, we're going to go and, and literally start that posting, but we'll let you know, um, so that you feel really good about the process that, um, we're using. One thing that is important though, and, and let me back up, when I said timeline, meaning like by the end of this week, right? So we'll try to shoot that back to you within the next, you know, kind of day. Have you by maybe the end of the week, um, just say, yep, that's fine, it's good, or I, I need to add this, you know, just the wordsmithing, and you send it directly to us, so you're not talking to each other, right? Today is that meeting, you've given us kind of direction, but we just want to make sure we give the fine tune, and then we place that as part of your job description. Um, one thing that we do want to finalize, and to your point about the, uh, requirements, right? For the job, I want to make sure I hear from you if there's any preferences or requirements. So the example that I would say, um, is thinking about things like, do you want them to be bilingual? Do you want them to be, um, again, have the, uh, have a doctorate, have the credential, have experience in cabinet? Like, these are all things that we use to do our screening. And so I would, um, definitely suggest a couple of things, but I would say you want to have requirements and then you want to make sure you have preferences. Sometimes when you make things required, you will cancel out people who will be great candidates. And remember, this kind of sounds crazy, but there's really no requirement to be a superintendent, like in the kind of the broad sense of things, right? You could pick anyone. Um, but there obviously is some requirements you want to have, right? So something like, hey, have cabinet level experience, probably not a bad idea, right? Um, but there may be some great person that's non-traditional, right? We've had those superintendents who are non-traditional. Um, and actually, I think one of them on here, the example, um, was, uh, for example, not necessarily going through the classroom, but going through either counseling or the business side of things, right? So that's still very highly qualified people. So you want to be mindful of what that looks like, um, and just kind of let us know. So is there anything that's sticking out for you right now that you feel, um, is kind of a non-negotiable requirement?
I don't think I have any requirements, but I think preferences.
Okay.
Um, would ideally be Spanish speaking, ideally doctorate level education, and ideally, um, classroom experience.
Okay, so classroom. And you can see those, by the way, at the bottom, I forgot to say that, at the very bottom, some of the language. It's pretty uniform, but if you have something specific, so I heard a classroom experience, uh, doctorate, and bilingual, Spanish. All right, and that's all preferences. Okay.
For me, it would be bilingual, bi-culture.
Bilingual, bi-culture, yeah, we have a few that we've put on like that, yep. Okay. Okay. Um, anything around, yeah, go ahead.
I was just, I was thinking about that, that bilingual, so like a heritage speaker? So like, do you have a specific preference of language? Because that could be, like bilingual, bi-culture could be.
Yeah, did I hear Spanish or did I just?
I said, I said Spanish.
You did, okay. Cause I did, was that in my head, right? Okay, so Spanish would be something I would say would make sense for your community to actually call out the language, uh, but being mindful that, you know, there may be people who are not bilingual, but definitely sometimes will say they can be, I, I think of bi-cultural multiple ways, right? Um, is that you are very, what I call culturally proficient, right? You may not know the language, but you know how to communicate.
Correct.
And you understand body language, you understand how to immerse yourself, even if you don't know the language per se. And you know how to use your interpreters correctly, right? Um, so definitely, I think that covers, I think, anyone in that category. And then, um, when you get to like interviews, right? We usually ask, but when you get to interviews, those are also things you can kind of reveal when you ask certain questions, um, and ask them about their background and how they might, you know, interact with the community, cause you have a community centered, right? Criteria, so there's going to be questions in there, that could be where that comes into play. Um, so I have classroom experience, doctorate, uh, bilingual. Do you have any re- uh, requirements, like folks who may not really qualify for this job?
I would prefer to be, I'm using the word preference only to talk to the board about it, but someone who is credentialed.
Yep.
Cause I know there can be classified, um, superintendents too. We can change the classification, but I prefer, if someone has classroom experience, they have been a credentialed teacher.
Yep. So credentialed t- teacher or admin? Cause remember, you've got two different degre- credentials.
Credentials, I mean, you have to, admin credential, of course.
So admin credential. Well, again, superintendents don't have to have that, yeah, so that's what's interesting.
But I'm saying that's the, I think that should be a requirement.
I see what you mean. Yep, okay. Um, okay, I want to massage.
That's, that's, that's what I'm hoping for, but that's, if it's a requirement, the board should say yes, not just me.
Yeah, I'd, I'd still lean toward preference, and I mean, I think of, at least for me personally, like, that's not a strong preference either, but I think, I think more concerned about getting rid of candidates that may be non-traditional, that would be, I think, really great for our district.
Yep, okay, here's some language that might help too, is there was a possess or be able to obtain a California administrative credential. And so what that means is you're not necessarily discriminating against someone who's not from California, right? Um, but has the ability to obtain that. Again, when you're talking about then cabinet level experience, teaching experience, right? It really kind of adds up to you have a credential. So I think being just mindful of not wanting to take that non-traditional person out of it is what I think would be a good preference, um, or use the language possess or ha- or be able to obtain.
Yeah, I'm not thinking about out of state, cause you can have a credential out of state. Uh, so that, so I'm not talking about them, cause they, they can apply.
Okay.
I know that there are times when boards hire people who don't have credentials.
Yep.
Like they were, uh, I don't know, the, the former mayor, right? And they're now the superintendent.
Yep.
And so that's, I think that they need to be an educator, but considering, um, President Hernandez talked about a classroom experience, that probably would cover that.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And then what about cabinet experience? Is that, oh, do you have a question about that?
Yeah, just, I was kind of wondering, cause I come from the healthcare field and like, so oftentimes there would be also a stipulation that within X amount of months, you would seek to get this credential, with that, um, kind of, you're making a face.
Well, I'm trying to make sure you all are in a space where you're not eliminating anyone, but then also being mindful, you want someone with experience, right? So it might just be the difference of requirement versus preference.
Can you give an example? Cause I don't, I, I don't understand, to, give an example of how we could be eliminating someone.
Well, again, that non-traditional person, and again, in our state, like, if, I don't have to have a credential to be your superintendent. You see what I'm saying?
That's a classified person, a classified staff member.
I don't have to be, I don't have to have a credential to be your superintendent.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying? And it sounds really crazy, right?
Yeah, come on, Brian, saying he could do it.
Yeah, so, so I, I, so, but then you have the experience piece, right? So saying I have cabinet level experience, you got to have an admin credential.
Yeah, I, I personally would do that.
Okay.
I, I would do the cabinet level, and it answers your question and what you just said.
Yep.
And then also, um, they have.
So teaching and cabinet. Because remember, again, non-traditional, sometimes that can be something that you say it's a preference, right? Someone may have not been a teacher, but been in cabinet, right? So you want to be mindful of, is teaching experience something that's a preference requirement? Cabinet level experience. And so I would say the, the requirements, like, you can see some of the examples here. Um, a lot of them are using preference language just to avoid eliminating anyone. Uh, but there is some where it's like, no, this is our requirement, so.
Yeah, I think the person should have an admin credential, but that's my personal experience, my personal and professional, um, recommendation.
So how do y'all feel about this language? This is under Washington, so it says successful teaching and administrative experience at the cabinet or superintendent level are, it says are preferred, but it's under the requirements. Um, they're required to have a, a master's, you all said doctorate, which again, um, preference though, preference, yeah. Um, California credential is preferred, so you're just using preferred language, but it also gives us like the guidelines for when we're also screening. So something that's kind of a no-brainer for screening, a lot of times is like when people, uh, may have had a cabinet level position, but they don't have longevity, right? So when we say successful, what does that mean? It means you're not job, jumping from job to job, because sometimes that could be something that does not really fit your vision for stability, right? So, um, so yeah, see, I think we're capturing what you're saying. So credential, teaching experience, and of course admin through cabinet experience, executive cabinet level experience. Okay. Yes, yes? Was I saying that right? And that's a requirement? Or you want to put it under preference?
I would love to put it under preference, but I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Say preference, cause not everyone that has a degree is qualified for a job. They may have it on paper, but they, in the real world, they may not be able to actually perform the work. So I would say, um, preference.
And I guess to add, um, it sounds like we have a strong preference, but like, we ultimately make the decision, so.
You do, and it gives us like the marching order for how we recruit, so I think it's pretty clear. Um, just some boards, we say, like, if there's something that is absolutely required, like that would tell us, like, this person is disqualified, cause they don't fit your description. But we do also want to say that you never want to create such a box where people who might be a great superintendent can't apply because of something that is so stringent around the requirement, so.
So a question around the admin credential.
Mm-hmm.
If you have a superintendent who does not have an admin credential, can they supervise people with admin credentials under them?
Your appointee, your one employee, you've appointed them to do that.
To declare something.
Yeah, some, yeah.
The board has to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it's not, I've had a boss without a credential, she couldn't evaluate me, cause she wasn't credentialed.
Yeah.
Right, and so.
As a superintendent?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so that's why I'm saying, like, these folks got to be supervised and know that the person has the.
Right.
Background skills, right?
Yeah. And I, I guess my, my one thing is that I don't want you to get too concerned about it, cause your qualified candidates are going to fit everything you just shared. So that's the great thing about this job. Um, like I said, I've had two non-traditionals, but again, they both were in spaces where they had admin credentials, had executive cabinet experience, which is what puts them in that space. So I'm not concern, too concerned about it, but I just want to make sure it's clear for what, how you want it to be read. So, sounds like your colleagues are saying like, just leave it as preferences, but it all is going to line up the same way in so many words? Does that sound okay?
It's the majority of the board.
The will of the board, huh?
I'm just here.
Yeah, no, it's good stuff. I think it's great language. So what we'll do is we're massage it based on some of the things you see here. This is pretty standard language you see in the examples. Um, so again, you'll see this final before we put this out, just to make sure we get your approval. So bilingual, bi-cultural, uh, Spanish language preferred, preferred doctorate, um, cabinet level experience, classroom experience.
So do we have any requirements?
Um, right now, you don't have any requirements, um.
I don't think a lot of these have.
Yeah, a lot of them didn't, but I wanted to look at one that I think might, I didn't give it to them, um.
I think there was.
Yeah, maybe one.
Let me give them one. Uh, duh, 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 where'd it go?
Requirements on this one.
Uh, we do have requirements for, um, Washington Unified. Their requirements are successful teaching and administrative experience at the cabinet or superintendent level, or always says preferred, under requirements.
Yeah, the language was a little, yeah, it was a little tricky out there.
It is required that candidates have a master's degree, a doctor in education has preferred, a California administrative cred-, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So like, here's an example, one I didn't give it to you, but this is one where a board said requirements. They said successful experience as teacher and leader at the classroom, site and district levels, um, a bachelor or master's degree, so this was under requirement. And then also, um, strong working knowledge of best, uh, business practices and budget development, um, which is also part of a criteria. So those are things they put under requirements. And then their preferences were, um, uh, California administrative experience at cap- cabinet level, and they specifically said California, right? So they were calling out California's preference. Um, they had, um, they had hold of admin credential under, um, preference as well, which is interesting. So I think it's kind of like a, uh, yeah. I, I think it's what you want to, so we leave it as preferences, right? And then that gives us guidelines, and that way you don't feel like you're putting anyone in a box, if that makes sense. And if you do get to this space where we have to cross this bridge with your finalists, then we'll talk about like what that might mean when you get to that point. So I think that's fair. Right now, it's just kind of broad open for people to consider. Does that make sense? Okay, so we'll create the language for you, include it in your criteria, shoot that back for you by the end of the week, so you can be able to give us final feedback. And if necessary, we'll get to February 19th and, um, do any final adjustments, you name it. Uh, because the electronic advertisements can be updated, that's the good part, right? Um, it's the hard copies that we get worried about. So I think we've covered everything on the list tonight that we need from you to get direction moving forward. Um, yeah, I think we've gotten everything. So any final questions, thoughts, feelings?
Any questions?
Yes, this question probably was already answered.
That's okay, okay, you're good.
Did we discuss salary scale? Or is that just individually based?
We didn't. So one of the things that, um, I would say, it's a kind, and this is a tricky one. So with school boards, um, having a range is something that, like, as, as consultants, we need to know. But we also know that you have to negotiate this, right? And so depending on who you pick, that could look very different, because you might have a sitting superintendent versus someone who's brand new, right? And so that could look different. Um, so usually we require, we recommend you also talk with, um, your attorney around like what you did with your, you know, you have a contract that you already had with the previous superintendent. Sometimes that's where boards start, and you do have to talk about parameters, right? Cause there's more than just the base salary. So we didn't want to pressure you to do that tonight unless you were prepared to do it, but usually boards need to talk to their attorney. We want you to feel comfortable before you put a number out there. So right now, since it's so early, usually what we'll say is to anybody who asks, it's negotiable, and if they are, you know, wanting to know, like, hey, you can look at what the last, the previous superintendent's contract was, just to get a ballpark figure. So that's usually where we start. The 19th is where we probably want to have you give us like a range, so then we can actually, um, share it. Um, typically, we'll put it on our, uh, website, you know, make it so that it is something people can see, but not put you in a box where you feel like this is exactly what we're going to do, right? I want you to be really mindful of that, because negotiations could be something totally different. So, does that make sense? Maybe talk to your attorney first, look at your contract parameters you've done before, um, based on how you negotiated your last contract, and then maybe give us an ID on the 19th, so you feel comfortable. Yeah? Okay, okay. Okay, okay. Yeah.
Candidates, candidates will ask. They'll always ask.
Good question, and we did not cover that.
So good, good question. So everyone feel good about where we're at?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Cool, all right, well, thank you so much for guiding us through this process tonight, really appreciate it.
Yeah, we're excited for you. So Maya, we look forward to hanging out with you a little while. We try to make it as easy as possible, but, uh, just look forward to the next step of the stakeholder input sessions and hearing from your, your stakeholders. So with that, uh, we will get out of your way. Again, do you all need folders or no? You feel good about, you want a folder to keep all your stuff?
I'll take a folder. Yeah, it sounds like we all will take one.
Sometimes you just need a way to, and this is actually included, and there's no need for folders, so you all don't have to dress too much.
Thank you.
I know y'all want extra papers, sometimes they just want to keep it in one place. And anything confidential that we give you on the process, we'll actually collect and return. I think, but for now, this is, um, you are, just for you to keep.
Great, so I guess moving on to start concluding out our meeting. Our future meetings are on February nineteenth and March nineteenth. And lastly, we have adjournment, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move approval. A second.
Great, so we've probably moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say no, and the meeting is over at nine twenty-one PM.
Yes.